Okay, good evening. Welcome to the March 4th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel.
Here.
Julia Schaper.
Here.
Deborah Bloom.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler. John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom. Allison Wilson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the seven board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Sharon Montaigne, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristy Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Scornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding the meeting minutes for the February 4th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting or the February 18th, 2025 Board Voting Meeting? Okay, and we're going to move on. We will not be amending the agenda tonight. As far as public comments on agenda items, no one has signed up. And we're going to move right into committees. Education with Mrs. Wilson.
There are some field trips to report within the 60-mile radius, and then we will be voting this month on ban students going to the Kalahari Resort in Pocono Mountain on April 9th through 11th. So that is something that we will be voting on in two weeks. Any questions about that? Okay, then I do have here for us to discuss, Dr. Hoyt shared with me today, the materials, their ELA resources for the junior high school, and we will be making, looking at making this purchase. He's going to talk a little bit about how they went about choosing this resource.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. So what you're going to be presenting in front of you are both the hard copy, and I also will quickly showcase the digital versions of the Grade VII and Grade VIII new curricular primary resource for our Grade VII and Grade VIII Junior High. This was a culmination of efforts with Dr. El Caro and Mrs. Cheryl Larson, our Junior High Language Arts Department Chair. They spent a number of meetings time communication, looking at different resources that were out there. They spent a lot of time vetting those resources, asking questions, bringing in the publishers to ask questions, and really doing a lot of collaboration around how it's aligned to our standards for Pennsylvania and best practices in language arts instruction. So what you're going to see that I'll pass around is the Grade VII and Grade VIII teacher physical resource and student consumable. The students will get this consumable every year for the six-year license. And then what I also have up on the screen for you is there's a digital license that's up there. So the teachers and students also have access to the resources 24/7 as well, and that would be for six years. We find this to be an exceptional resource that is aligned to the standards. There's a lot of different readings, text, grammar, writing, that all match the skills for best practices in language arts. And I really want to give kudos to the department and Dr. El Caro for really investing the time in this because, you know, being fully transparent, it is an expensive item, but this is something that Dr. El Caro and his team, specifically Dr. El Caro, was able to get down from the original, quote, $22,000. So in working with them, was able to reduce shipping and was able to reduce the overall cost of the resource over the course of that time.
I just have one question, and it's something I ask often, just when I see six years. If you could just talk a little bit about, you know, what you guys have seen and what this company provides us over those six years. Obviously, new resources may come about in three years, and we're stuck with a six-year agreement. So just an understanding of why we chose six years as opposed to a two-year or a three-year, knowing how fast technology is changing.
The one thing about these companies, and we actually just saw this with math, when you approve the math resources, is that when they change their interface and their, the user interface for the student and the teacher and some of the resource, they will help to integrate those in. If they go with a completely, totally new series, that's a different story. But as they make any changes to that, that's part of the deal where that we get access to those. The standards for language arts haven't changed since 2014, 15, but what this allows for, at least with this series, is giving the kids the access both outside and inside of school. So, you know, for the kids who don't have their Chromebooks, they have this consumable resource that comes with it. That's one of the reasons why they wanted to go with this one, because many of the resources that are out there right now, Mr. Morgan, are simply tech-only. And, you know, we don't want to be in a situation where kids are constantly on their screen to read things. You don't always have access to the Internet, access to your technology. This gives that consumable as a resource as well. We work with our publishers all the time. If we have concerns about things or things have changed because of the money that we do invest in these things, you know, they certainly work with us. On the fiscal side of things, the shorter the license agreement, the actually more expensive it is in a per diem component of it. So going with a one- or two-year license with this would actually make the resources a little bit more pricey. They're not as flexible as that. And then from another perspective, fiscally, we also try with long-term forecasting, as I mentioned before, to try and balance out when are all of our licenses ending across the district. So we don't have a given year, a couple of years down the road, where we have 10 different resources coming up, and now we have a major, major purchase down the road, too, so.
Yep, that's great. I understand that. I just, I'm always concerned because I know you guys look at data every year, and then we adjust our curriculum based on that data. So as long as the administration is comfortable that in two, three, four, five, six years down the road, that we don't have to stop and pivot and we're stuck with a license, then I'm comfortable with this.
And I just want to comment, I appreciate that feedback. The number-one impact in the classroom is the classroom teacher. And this resource isn't necessarily our, it's not our curriculum. It's one of the core resources for our curriculum, but there are still some other resources that we use. As times change, as things come up, we look at those things to help to, maybe some students need some supplements or things like that, or we need to supplement an area that a resource might be lacking, because all of these resources are written to the national core. They're typically written to the Texas, the Californias, the Floridas of the world, and they tell you that there's a Pennsylvania correlation. The teachers and my team and special education team, we work really hard to try and say, how does some of the Pennsylvania language fit into this? So we are making some of those amendments and changes along the way. So this isn't the sole provider for what kids are getting in that experience. It's one of the core ones, but it's really the teacher is the one that has that greatest impact on what goes on in there. So, didn't mean a long-winded, but just wanted to address that.
And also, is this consumable meaning that each year, we're going to get a shipment of these books for our students to use for that year?
That's correct.
And then this shipping cost covers all six years?
That's correct. So you're paying for that upfront. So, you know, there, six years from now, shipping, you know, the postal rate could go up significantly, but we've paid for that ahead of time.
And in addition, it also includes six hours of professional development for the teachers.
Right. So we're working on that to identify the time for that to work with, and we've been in contact with them, as is Dr. El Caro. They've been a great organization to work with so far.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question. And a congratulations. I see there's an excerpt from Virgil Zaniad in here. Fantastic. I've never heard of that going for, in a junior high text. Wonderful. Question about the publisher. From how many samples or different publishers did we draw this particular selection? How many, how many did you review beforehand?
So I'm going to call Dr. El Caro up just to answer that for you, because he was working hands-on with the Language Arts Department, who can speak a little bit more to that for you.
Great, thank you.
So the question was, how many? So we actually, we reviewed three different primary core resources. The list actually started a little bit larger than that. So the first thing, myself, along with Becky Bush, we looked at the structured literacy programs that were being supported by the state, because we want to make sure that we're in line with the standards that are out there, and also the programs that are, you know, being utilized not only in the secondary level, but also in our K-6 programming. So we want that transition to be, you know, as seamless as we can make it. And so we looked at that list. We then looked at the other districts around the county who have gone to newer resources within the last couple of years, and we then brought in three different resources for the English Department to look at. We also used the senior high school department chair, Heather Mills, as another resource, because we wanted to make sure that any resource we were using at the junior high school would also align with what standards they were using in ninth grade, so that that transition was as smooth as possible.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I have another question. I didn't bring my laptop tonight, but there was a sheet online, on the agenda online, that showed somebody had checkmarks, acceptable and I think unacceptable, or something negative. And there were quite a few in that second column, and I'm curious to know what you're doing and how you're going to do it to get those negatives erased and over into the, into the positive.
Yeah, you're speaking of the few things that are checked and adequate.
Textbook evaluation rubric.
Right. So we have the groups of teachers who actually go through, and that's how they vet the resources. So individual teachers as a department will go and fill that out, and then they converse, and then what they do is they come to a consensus agreement then, in the end, based off the vet. So in the end, like, we never have 100% agreement on everything, I think, in anything.
Well, that's good.
Right? So, you know, what we do is then, if there are concerns about any resource that we have, certainly we work together. We work to address that. We work how we can support that. If there's a need to provide any type of technical support or instructional support, we work with that. So, but, you know, in my experience, people are very passionate about things that they like in a certain content area or a certain resource. You know, when people are dissatisfied, we certainly do whatever we can to work with them.
No, as I say, I'm glad to see that. Two of the ones I'm looking at need further training. So it's the teachers asking for more training, which I think is a very positive, a very positive negative.
Right, and that's why-
And that will be incorporated into the first semester or something. How will that work?
Right, so that's, we're working on to develop that professional development. We get the six hours of the training with the company, but they also provide a lot of technical support. We have a great relationship. We reach out, and then we will, when we develop our PD plan, we look at how we can support that. And part of the PD plan for the Language Arts Department, specifically in the junior high, is going to be tailored around doing check-ins and making sure their needs are met and that we don't have any concerns or things that we need with regard to the resource.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I also do, I forgot to say this, do want to really thank Heather Mills, Language Arts Department Chair at the high school. She's been, done a wonderful job of coming and really creating that seven-to-12 articulation, and we're excited in the future that we will be going with this. And I just will mention one other thing. This is for the budget for next year. So this is planned for, with the potential of the budget passing for next year, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
So just to be clear on that, the budget, we're voting on it now, in two weeks, so it's not pending the budget being passed. If we vote on it, it's going to be incorporated in the budget.
Right. What I mean is this is part of the general budget for next year, is what I'm saying. Yes.
Right. But whether the budget passes or not, once this passes, my understanding is, is that this will be incorporated in the budget.
Yes, that's correct.
I would just like to see if I get a thumbs up from our shipping and handling czar, Mr. Morgan.
They didn't break it down? No, I'm just kidding. I have full faith that Mr. El Caro gave him heck over the phone and got it down where it needed to be. Thank you.
I could tell you it was over, for shipping, it was over $2,000 savings that he made, so.
And I think that the point is, is that we're consistently given, in the years that I've been here, shipping rates, and when we go back, we are able to get those reduced. So I think it's in our best interest to continue to do that.
Yeah, they typically do. It's usually just, they do a flat 10% or 5%, and then, you know, I have Becky and Joe, who are relentless, so.
Right, which is also-
I don't even need to talk to these people, because they're afraid of those, too, so.
And I'll just say, that's often ironic, because, right, shipping and handling shouldn't be a flat fee, right? It should be based on pounds and cost and labor, not a flat fee. So, thank you.
Okay, that's everything for me.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. First thing up is a vote for items for disposable. For those of you that don't remember, when there are textbooks that have to be disposed of, we need to vote on them. There is an attachment. It looks like most of these are outdated French and German textbooks, and it looks like most of them are actually teachers' editions. Any questions?
How will we dispose of them? Recycle?
We do not burn bucks.
I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
Second thing is a approval for E-Rate bid. This is for Service Electric Communications, and the information is attached. Does anybody have any questions?
Just my favorite question. Is this a renewal, or is this the first time using this service?
Sheldon?
It's a renewal of a current service that we've had as long as I've been here.
And you're satisfied with the service?
Absolutely. It is a fantastic deal.
Wonderful, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on that? All right, the next thing we have is the 25-26 BCTC Proposed General Fund Budget. I'm trying to find in here what the total budget is. Mr. Feig- $1,071,133 for regular ed, and another $81,827 for special needs. It's about a $36,000 increase over last year. And do we know what the percentage is on that? Total percent? Looks like three, is it? I know it's over 3%. 3.66, it looks like? Yeah. And, Mr. Feig? But then the percentages of how it breaks down goes by number of students. Yep. Do you have anything? I know you're on the BCTC.
Nothing to add, except to, by way of explanation, most of the increase is due to contracted salaries and benefits.
And just a reminder to the public that this is, that we are not on the hook for all of this. This is spread out amongst all of the districts and the BCTC. Any questions on the BCTC Proposed General Fund Budget? And I believe, just for point of order, next voting meeting, that'll have to be a roll call as well, correct? Correct. Okay. Next is a tax assessment appeal. Your docket number is attached. This is number D. Does anybody have any questions about this? Mr. Feig, maybe you can just run down how a tax assessment appeal works and why we would see this in front of the board. On every single commercial property that's appealed, we do send representation to fight the appeal. If we feel it's like a huge decrease, and it's not warranted, most of times, when a person appeals, or a company appeals their assessment, they feel it's way over-assessed.
He's a residential.
Well, these are also a large residential group. So what they came in for was a lot less than we felt, so we did fight it. We, like I said before, we fight every commercial. We look at the large residentials and actually what they're looking for. I mean, if someone comes in, just bought a house for $400,000, says it's only worth $200,000, we're going to definitely fight that. So in the appeal process, there's appraisals. They have to provide, and appraisals we provide, and usually they're somewhere between where you settle. And when we do that, we try to put in there that there's a maximum term. They cannot go in for an appeal again.
Correct. And we do actually go after residentials. It's sort of a legal requirement. You can't just pick on one type of property. So we have a threshold, and anybody that falls within that threshold may get appealed.
So according to the solicitor, we pick on everyone equally.
So-
These are often in response to a taxpayer taking an appeal, though, and I don't recall if these were taxpayer-initiated. Typically, typically, these homeowner ones are taxpayer-initiated, but.
So we don't do this with every taxpayer, like, every appeal from a taxpayer? It just has to-
We look at the market values and what they're asking for.
Right.
Yeah, like I said, if someone just bought their house for $400,000, they're saying it's only worth $200,000, how can you prove that it's worth $400,000? So it really comes down to what the market value is, and if it justifies us spending the money to fight it or not to fight it. So then, as a result of that, just thank you for the explanation for clarity. This is going to cover D, E, and F. So does anybody have any questions on D, E, or F? Okay, hearing none. I believe that ends my report. Mr. Mel?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I was actually going to ask you if you'd be so kind to take the Facilities and Transportation Committee also, since Dr. Battler isn't here.
Sure.
Thank you.
You did, but that's okay. I got a handle. Okay, so first thing for facilities is the 2025-2020 Exeter Township BCIU Transportation Services Proposal. And let me just review real quick. Maybe, Mr. Feig, do you have the numbers on that and the increase year-over-year? Correct. Right now, we have BCIU running certain bus runs. They're pretty much the VOTEC runs, the Prokia runs, oh, you have them up there, and the Prokia runs. When I was looking at next year's budget, I wanted to try to lock them in, talking to their business manager and talking to their transportation director. They would lock our rates in based on, maybe giving them a three-year proposal, which I've asked for. So the actual 25-26 rate is the same as we're paying for this year's rate, and the following year, it's about a 3% increase, and following year after that. We still have to have a contract drawn up, but before I have the contract drawn up and brought to the April voting meeting, I'd like to have a consensus that we'd like to go with the three-year proposal. I have no problems with BCTC's service. They've been very proactive and helpful for us. So I see the rates are different. I guess that's because of where they're going, correct? Correct. Is there any consideration whether they're running electric, propane, or gasoline or diesel engines? No, but the IU is switching all their buses over to gases or buying new ones, regular gas, not propane gas. They seem to be more efficient and cheaper to run that way. We did, like, the two yellows that are in that, the bottom two, we were running small buses before, and the number of students came down. That we can, the one, we can do in a nine-passenger van, and the other from a 72-passenger down to a 48-passenger bus. So that was a little bit of savings. And this rate is per week? Per run, per day. Per day? Correct. And is it the assumption that we must use them, or if we choose not to, if we increase our bus employment, are we obligated to still pay this daily rate? No, we're not. We can drop it. I think we're going to have to give them two weeks' notice. Right now, we're short drivers. We need that service. So it is contracted, then? It is not a per diem rate? No, it's contracted. And we would have to drop, we would have to actually drop them if we chose to? A run, meaning a run. If we were able to hire the number of drivers, then we'd definitely bring it in-house. But the same point, then, is if I'm using them for three years, I can probably drop buying four buses next year down to three buses, because we're not, it's not all wear and tear on our buses, it's wear and tear on their buses. And that's under the assumption that that's because you don't have drivers to support the buses you'd be buying for? Correct, correct. Questions? Okay, moving on. Parks and Recreation Summer Program Transportation. This is really informational, but we probably should have board approval, since we are providing a service to another government. They've asked us to transport their field trips on Fridays for their summer programs at the township. Kaya's come up with a rate which covers our cost.
So just to confirm, someone from the township approached the school district to do this?
Correct.
Okay. And the, what we've drawn up here is to provide them these services at cost, no additional-
No, it's at our cost.
At cost, yep. Yep. Okay, thank you.
And does this need to be approved by their bargaining unit? No. No, no. It's just summer work, but it should be approved by the board, so they, you know, we're basically transporting someone else's a favor. Anyone have any questions? Is it, Mr. Mel? Do you want me to take personnel also?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you for the offer, Mr. Morgan. I do appreciate that.
You're welcome, too.
He's a trooper. He is. Well, I did call him the shipping and handling czar earlier, so I kind of do, I do deserve it. All right, so moving on, Dr. Herring with Personnel Committee.
Thank you. We'll be voting on resignations of certificated staff, support staff, extracurricular staff, and certificated substitutes, retirement of support staff. Larry Lady, full-time custodian, is retiring after 35 years of service, appointments of food service staff, and certificated substitutes, and leaves of absences. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. And we're going to move on to Policy Committee with Mrs. Bloom.
We have the following policies for first reading. Policy number 247, hazing. Policy number 249, bullying and cyberbullying, and policy number 252, dating violence. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a summary of the changes. There are just a few updates to these three policies. If you recall, we've been updating a batch of policies around changing language from local law enforcement references to appropriate law enforcement references, and so these policies are updated to reflect that, as well as the language we've been updating to reflect better collaboration with the Title IX Coordinator when it is necessary to do so in these incidences. And that's it.
Okay, any other discussion on policy? Okay, we're going to move on then. Public comment on non-agenda items. No one has signed up. And then we're going to move on to things that are going to move to our March voting meeting. So it's going to be meeting minutes. So it's going to be meeting minutes, and items for B and C, 5A through F, 6A and B, 7A through D, and 8A.
I believe that 6A, Mr. Feig said, was for the April meeting once the contract was drawn up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that true? Okay. Oh, thank you.
I just want to make sure the board's all right with the three-year. I'll have a contract going up behind you. Have to slip to review it. But, um.
Okay. All right. So thank you for that correction, Mr. Morgan. So it'd just be 6B then for that committee going into the voting meeting? Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Mel, I have something, if you're okay?
I am always okay.
So I have some exciting news. Mr. Odom isn't here. I said that I would share this news, just some news around our athletes throughout the district. So first off is, on Friday at 7:00 PM, our boys' basketball team is competing in the first round at state playoffs. My understanding is that that will be at home. I would assume, because it's a state playoff game, that you have to get tickets through the PIAA, that it will not be at the door, so. That's correct. So I would encourage everybody to come out and, and support our team. And then even more exciting news, we had two wrestlers this year qualify for states. They'll be going to the Giant Hershey Center this week, starting on Thursday. So the first is Kevin Oswald. He is a season record of 43 and 8, Berks County champion, sectional champion, regional fifth-place champion, state qualifier, and all-county selection. And then Molly Lubinow with a season record of 27 and 8, Berks County champion, second-place sectional champion, fourth-place regional champion, state qualifier, and all-county selection. Molly actually starts on Thursday. I think it's pretty cool because she is our first-ever Exeter girls' wrestling female to move on to the state through the PIAA. If you guys remember, I think it was three years ago, the board was approached about girls' wrestling. They had to support that organization on their own for two years before sanctioned by the district. Molly was also a big part in recruiting and growing that. So she's a senior, Kevin's a sophomore, so we certainly wish them the best as they move on to the states. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Can I just add something, too?
Yes, absolutely.
Tomorrow night is the String Jam. It will be held in the high school gym. It's a really cool event. If you've never been there, it's all of our strings, third grade through 12th grade. So, and they all get to, to play separately, but then at the end, they all play together. So when we talk about music in our schools and how important it is, you should really come out and get a chance to see all of these students together and to see how they grow from third grade to 12th grade.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Anyone else? All right. I just have one announcement. The general reminder for the public that there is a public meeting for the Joint Comprehensive Plan between Exeter, Amity Douglas Townships, and St. Lawrence Borough. That is happening this Thursday, March 6, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the junior high school auditorium.
And, Mr. Mel, I believe there's a 6 o'clock as well, correct? The day before?
Uh, it's actually going on right now.
Oh.